Margin last time.
Oh, yeah.
Probably the closest place that he would get.
If you got one minute.
Primary. But he's the incumbent governor.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
I guess I'm all right.
Living the dream, aren't we?
Well, I am.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was out last week. I didn't get your email answer till a little bit ago. I was at a conference.
Some people unfortunately are concerned.
Okay, we're live.
My sister's concerned. She's not.
We're live, so we'll call it a work here in five thirty.
We're up.
Oh, sorry. All right, now call to order the Honeyberg Common Council meeting at five thirty. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Good Father God, thank you for those citizens that are here today to give their input in the meeting, and thank you for our council here. Elected officials that are here to listen to these, to the concerns and the reports today. And as they act upon them, I ask that you be with them, that the decisions made here today are benefit for all citizens of the city of Honeyberg. For these things, I ask in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
First, I'll ask for a motion for approval of minutes.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
And a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims. Have a motion to accept?
I move to approve the claims.
I'll second the motion.
We have first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Now I have presentation from Destination Honeyberg. I don't know who's doing the presentation. She is. All right, thank you. Just come to the podium, you introduce yourself, because we are live and everybody watching wants to know who you are.
My name is Devin Springsteen. I'm a business owner here in Honeyberg, a current president of Destination Honeyberg, and on my seventh year on the board. So here, just to give a recap of the year, who we are, what we do, and I believe you should have the presentation in front of you as well. But we're an organization of volunteers, a lot of community members, professionals from, that work here in Honeyberg as well, that don't live in Honeyberg. But we're dedicated to the development, enrichment, encouragement of an inviting atmosphere here in Honeyberg. Making sure that our brand as a city is elevated and fostering community in everything that we do. On the slideshow, you'll see our footprint as well. So it's downtown Fourth Street, from First to Sixth, Van Buren to Geiger. And then additionally, we include League Stadium. From a board standpoint, we currently have one open board seat. And you can see that it is a variety of business owners, professionals working in the city of Honeyberg. Property owners in the commercial district, Fourth Street business owners, and Honeyberg residents. Additionally, we do have an advisory member, Whitley Lubers, from the tourism. As far as our organization, we work on a four-point approach. We have organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. Organization is really centered around the internal part of the board and our connection to the community. Promotion is that connection with tourism and the merchants, retail, special events, those kinds of things in the community. Design is more focused on alley activations, public art, those kinds of things. And then economic vitality, supporting the businesses in our footprint, whether that's helping them secure space or advertise spaces available for rent, and recruitment of businesses as well. And you can see the board members that are on those pillar committees. Then we move into the subcommittees. These are event-focused. So each of these subcommittees has a board member. And then members of the community that are volunteering their time to help on those subcommittees and help to organize those events. Additionally, on here, we do have our marketing team and the current blend team for subcommittees as well, in addition to our events. And then the next one is the events that we have in the community every year, starting with our Derby Day. This is our only ticketed event. It is a fundraising event for us, and this year was very successful, and we'll touch on that just a little bit later. We have the Honeyberg Farmers Market that runs through the summer. The Haunted Honeyberg Blues Festival in October, the Ice Shrink that happens in December, Fourth Fridays from May through August. Farmer's Table in September, and then our Christmas Journey that wraps up all of our events in December, the Parade Down Fourth Street. The following page is just a list of our donors. As you can see, there are people outside of Honeyberg that are committed to ensuring that our communities have free events to enjoy as well. And then Sarah, I may touch on you with the, through the years, just the historical piece of it. So it was founded in 2013 with the founding board of directors, and we attained our 501(c)(3) status then. In 2014, we were officially designated by Indiana, Indiana's Office of Community and Rural Affairs as a Main Street program. That was when Haunted Honeyberg started, and Fourth Fridays then kind of spawned from there. From that point, in 2020, we had the current Blend merger and took that over. And then in 2022, we helped to facilitate the city's sound system with the partnership with, with the city. 2023 mural project on 231, that was our big project that year. 2024 was our first year for Derby Day as an additional fundraising celebration, in addition to the Large Eclipse program out at the airport. And then to recap just a bit on this year, as I said earlier, we had the Derby Day event in May with attendance growing. We added some new fundraising things during the event and raised over $9,000 for the organization at that event this year. The other new thing we did this year was for the farmer's market, we had a grant through the Purdue Extension to provide vouchers to the community to purchase food from our vendors, meat, vegetables, eggs, and honey. Thank you. So they were able to use those vouchers to purchase from our farmers that participated in the farmer's market. And we also had the addition of the WhatsApp 24/7 plugin to our website. It helps to connect with other communities and helps to connect our events with those communities as well. And then collaboration, as we, we have for several years with the Merchants Association for Daffodil Stroll and Christmas Stroll, among other things throughout the year. So the, the next slide is just an outline of who Indiana Main Street is. It is part of Okra, and it provides us, so the, the four pillars that's provided by Indiana Main Street. And so it provides us that foundation as to how we should function internally, how we need to serve our community, and organize ourselves in aligning with community stakeholders. The following, the next one is just our year in review, and this kind of just gives you a brief overview of our timeline for the year. And then I kind of touched a little bit on the achievements for 2025, the voucher program. Continued success of the Fourth Fridays, the ability to maintain those as free events for our community. Collaborative effort, collaborative efforts with Red, White, and Brown and the Honeyberg Merchants throughout the year. And we celebrated 10 years of current Blend as our co-working space in downtown. For 2026, we meet, we will be meeting in November strategically as a board to plan for our goals. But the overarching things are a downtown facade program, generation of fundraising efforts at our free community, community events. We don't really have a great way to collect any funds from those people who attend the events, so we're going to work on that. Continued partnership with the Honeyberg Merchants, working towards sustainability. A strategic plan for 2026, after we have our Indiana Main Street Strategic Planning Workshop in January. And then obviously, a continued elevation of the city of Honeyberg's brand, our reputation as a destination for events, business development, shopping, and dining. So just to highlight a few of our events, first of all, like I said, Derby Day, over $9,000 raised for, for Destination Honeyberg. We have had positive experiences from and, and feedback from everyone at this event. The attendance did go up this year, we had addition of games. We had a catered buffet-style meal this year from Butcher and Barrel instead of just appetizers as last year. So we think we can elevate it even more next year and grow that event as well. The farmer's market, from the voucher program, we distributed over $9,000 in food to our, to members of our community through our farmers. We had a successful Kids' Day, and we always work with local organizations to provide something at the market for the community to partake in. And lastly, the Fourth Fridays, we will have our continued partnership with Red, Red, White, and Brown this year. We did vote on that this morning. We, it continues to be a free downtown event. This year, we have, through tourism, place our AI information on attendance. So for our four Fourth Fridays, May, June, July, and August, we had over 2,600 visitors total at Market Street Park. Of that, over, around 200 of them were from greater than 50 miles away. Then to add to that, from May through August, just for your all's information, we had 11.6,000 visitors to Market Street Park. 1.2,000 from greater than 50 miles away. So I think that's pretty awesome for our city. And then our other event that happened in October, Haunted Honeyberg, had just over 750 visitors for that one day. So I think that's all that I have. Any questions? Oh, that was fast. Is that fast enough, Neil?
I will say, no, I was kidding. I will say, I totally enjoyed the Derby event, and my wife and I will continue to support that greatly. The farmer's market, last year I was a little concerned, you know, about the attendance a year ago. This year it was fantastic.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we had some of the best days ever. More, I think more vendors helped that. Because there were days, what really impressed probably, I think, most of the vendors the most is that we, we saw more families this year than we've ever seen at the farmer's market. It wasn't just individuals walking in and buying vegetables and leaving. It was people bringing the families. Thank you for that, and I don't think ever, everybody commented on it that's been a vendor, because we've been a vendor since it started at Market Street Park. And there were some people that started out at the gym, you know, from those days. And those were the comments I, I heard. I have no statistics like you have to be able to show what that is, but it was much appreciated. I think we had four bakers there. We were the only ones for a couple of years.
Yeah.
There were four this year, and they, fantastic products that they had. We, we, even though we sold big, as we bought some of theirs and took home the breads, so some good bread. Appreciate it.
Reverse engineer it?
Yeah.
No, we didn't do that.
I think that it's a great idea. You guys are continuing to evolve, and we are so fortunate to have, because you are mostly all volunteer-based. And so it's pretty amazing that we have a group that loves our community so much that you're willing to do that, and I really appreciate it. And I think with the farmer's market too, that, that's such a, it's a, it used to be a hidden gem, but I think through the community events that you have every week, it is encouraging families to come. So I think it's neat that you're continuing to think up new things and new ways to get more people involved, because it's not, I mean, sometimes I'm like, oh, gosh, I liked when it was a hidden gem, because it was a secret, but now the secret's out, and you guys are doing great things. So we're very fortunate to have a group like you in our community. So thank you. Thank you.
I would like to meet with you sometime, talk about the, the facade program. That is a big one.
Yep.
For me, I think there could be some things that the city could assist with, with that.
And I think we recognize that's a big undertaking for us and why we have not done anything yet.
Funds ticket fully total, I know that. So if there's, there, I think, I have some ideas, so.
That would be great.
Like to look at that.
Absolutely.
Also, I did receive from Sarah last week the request, and I know this was budgeted for the, the $20,000 panel, was in our budget. I don't know if we need a motion tonight to approve, to go ahead and pay that. You know what, I know it's in the budget for the 20 grand, and
There's a claim.
Just put in a claim. Okay, okay, we're good. All right. We'll make sure.
Yeah, I think it, I, I just love it. I am just, I'm so proud of Honeyberg and our community, and I think it's so cool on Fourth Fridays to see so many people from outside of our community here partaking in part of it too, you know, our community, but also, but Honeyberg is super cool, and people are recognizing it, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll sign it and give it to Tom. You don't have to stay for the rest of unless you really, really want to.
Oh, you do. Oh, you gotta hear it all.
That's pretty exciting stuff.
You will not be judged if you leave. You will be judged if you stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Energy Superdude John Rudipoler.
Evening, council.
Wonder if his, his report will be as energetic and entertaining.
I did see a lot of tree trimming going on today. That was exciting. I've been here.
Always some of that going on.
Yeah.
They've been all over town the last couple of months.
Yeah.
Some city rideaways.
Growl active work. That's exciting.
Trees never stop growing.
That's true.
No, they do not.
They do, indeed.
Start off with the gas department. We did put four new services in this month. We have four applications on file. None of the contractors are ready. We did change out 59 gas meters this month. We put it well at the end of where we're going to change them out before the winter. We're about where our goal was on getting them changed out. Our supplier, he won't be getting meters in probably until January, February, so we're finishing up there. We are at 87% complete on meter changeouts. And then the crew's been doing valve inspections this month. Going around, one valve, we found a bunch of landscape rock piled on top of our valve, so it's always good to go out and make sure, do your inspections in case we need to get to it. But in short, that's basically what they've been doing this month. Any questions on the gas?
No, but a comment. I did notice your team was out Sunday, I believe, Saturday or Sunday out on a call, so I, just to note that they, I know they get called out on a regular basis, and they're out, and they're active, and they're trying to, I don't know.
And this time of year, everybody's starting their furnaces up and they get that.
Get a weird smell.
Smell.
Yeah.
Which is always good, that they're cautious.
It's better to be over cautious than that, and I, and I'm, the guys do a great job of that, so I commend them for, you know, getting there and spending enough time to really check stuff out.
Yep, so they've been doing.
Doing it quickly. I, I think, I don't think that people that haven't lived in Honeyberg always don't realize how awesome that is. We were on vacation for fall break, and we had a carbon monoxide alarm that went off and called the fire department, and it took them almost an hour. I thought, I'm glad the place wasn't on fire, but I mean, just the quick response time in our community is amazing for everything that we have, and you know, how people realize how fortunate we are to have that. I think that's good.
Anything else on the gas? Nope.
Nope.
We went on to the electric. Put five services in this month. One of them is Hunter's Crossing. We're completely done, Hunter's Crossing. It's become 100% full now. So that was a big, big project, several years in the making. We're glad to get that finished. Then they did finish the Dairy Queen and Venue 1408 last meeting. They had the poles replaced. Now they replaced the metering on the Dairy Queen and Venue 1408, got that all updated. And then we did, three Saturdays ago, Master Brand had their annual shutdown. We gotta go out and we gotta shut the service off to the building. They get into their switchgear, they get it all cleaned out, get all the dust out, which is a fire, or fire hazard. So while they did that, there was an old wooden pole we had our underground attached to. So we figured it'd be a good time to pull that pole out. And we did, had our vacuum machine out there, because there's underground conduits to it, which I have a picture there. We put one of our ductile poles, ductile iron poles, replaced it with that. So it's going to be good and solid for the years, many years to come. So they did a really good job. They come in on a Saturday, got that all done. And then, like I say, they did, working on tree trimming, several areas for the upcoming winter. Got snow and ice on the limbs that break off, hit the lines, knocked the power out. So we've been doing a lot of that. And then we were making plans to upgrade a stretch of our main lines along 231, out by the cemetery. From Sunset Drive, pretty well to Maple Street. I included several pictures. They're old poles. They're still in decent shape, but they're starting to lean. Pretty heavy, they're old. As you can see, they've got, some of them got climbing pegs on them. And that was back in the Indiana telephone days, probably. So they're probably good 70, 60 years old. It's a good creosote back then, good preservatives, but they are leaning. You know, we've been fortunate so far that storms come through that they haven't knocked them down. But that is one stretch where it'd be a major problem, storm come through, knock them down, it'd pretty well close the highway down. Take a lot of manpower to get it cleaned up, restored. And if we got other outages throughout the city, and we got lines down the highway, be, be a major issue. My recommendation, I'd like to put all ductile iron poles there. Like I said, it's a stretch of highway where there's no shoulders, there's no passing lane. So you're pretty well, pretty tight area to work in. You're gonna have to knock it down to one lane when you do replace the poles. And since, we used to get the wooden poles with pentachlorophenol, that's the treatment. Did away with that. They got the DCOI, Glenn's familiar with that. Ten years down the road, how's the pole's gonna be?
Last.
They gonna last? The new treatment?
Yeah, it is.
But I think it'd be a good investment in the infrastructure to replace them with ductile iron poles. You know, poles are supposedly withstand 120 mile an hour winds. Back in '09, when we had that F zero tornado come through on the southern end of town, we lost 20 poles back then. So it took a lot of outside help to come in, get the poles replaced, get everybody restored in power. I just think it'd be a good investment. Then there's two holes for the new popular ridge, apartments coming in. There's a pole on each side of 231 by HOF equipment we really need to replace, because that's what we're going to attach our new underground lines to. We had to put new lines on a 40-year-old pole. So once again, I think we're gonna put a ductile iron pole there. That's a 55 footer. We're gonna replace one on both sides of the highway, and we don't have any 55s with a ductile iron. But I just think that's a wise investment we could, I'd like to make on our system. Good, reliable. Which leads to the quote I have for poles, ductile iron poles. I got a quote for a truckload, being with the shipping being the same, whether you get a partial load or a full load. I'll let it up to the council. We want to go with the full load, if we want to go with a half a load, or if you just want to go with what poles we need. We're gonna need about 10 poles for them two projects. You know, poles are gonna last 100 years. One instance, like where Pam lives, we had a ductile pole there. Car ran off maybe a year ago. Hit the pole, didn't damage it. Would have been a wooden pole, would have broke it, don't know. But it would hurt. Would have hurt.
I, I have to agree with you on purchasing the poles. If you've got the money, which you obviously do in your account, that we go ahead and do it. Plus, I see you have a 17 to 19-week order file. So it's not like you're gonna get these next month.
And if we get the truckload of poles, that's gonna supply us for a, a long time.
Right.
So, you know, what's the price gonna be in a couple of years when we need more of it?
I also agree with changing the wooden poles out on 231, because that's an accident waiting to happen too.
Yeah.
And if they actually, there's somebody could take one of them out.
If they go down, that's a major issue, especially if we got outages throughout the city. We're gonna be stuck.
Just out of, what is the trending price of these ductile? Are they getting more expensive or less expensive?
They're getting less expensive.
I didn't think so.
Like wooden poles are pretty well doubled too.
Well, the treatment process and the, all that, so.
I mean, I know it's a little expensive now, but when a major storm comes through, it's priceless if they stay up.
If we don't use them, you will have them available for somebody to use, that, you know, if we have to, you know, offer them to a neighboring community that has a, a problem, you know, and a year, a couple of years down the road, then they need some help.
See with wooden poles, there's also a problem with woodpeckers.
Yeah.
You'll put a new pole up, and maybe a year down the road, two years down the road, you're gonna get woodpecker holes in them. You're, they'll dull their beaks trying to get on the ductile pole.
Yeah.
I personally like the way they look, better than the wooden poles. And it might be a good idea to just consider that going forward, that we're going to strategically continue to add these steel poles, so that, so that in these high, in areas where you've got a lot of lines hanging on them, and they might be servicing a large number of homes, if we could just gradually continue to replace them with the wooden, with the steel, I think it would make sense long-term.
They're gonna stay straight. Woodpeckers aren't, aren't gonna get them. A vehicle can hit them, and they're pretty well gonna still stay there.
Yeah, in the high-stress areas, it really makes sense.
Yes.
And we just, we just use them on the main line where it's a critical.
High stress and.
If a pole would come down, that'd be a critical area. We'd be a lot of work to get them back up and going. Just makes your system a lot stronger, reliable.
Yeah. Do you need a motion to approve on, on, on a purchase, or because of the price, or?
That's the only company that makes them in the United States.
Single source. I do see, is the freight included in the price per pole? Because there's no pole price or no freight.
It's included into the poles. And if we just go with a couple of poles, then the freight would be separate.
Freight separate.
Be about three grand.
Okay. I'd make a motion to allow John to make that purchase.
That is, like I said, that is the only company that makes them, the poles, and there's just two plants in the United States.
I'll second the motion.
We've got a first and second to accept the Brown's Title Credit Supply Quote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Question to the electric?
Nope, nice job.
Right, thank you.
If we could coordinate to not replace those poles during the school day, that'd be great.
During the what?
231, at eight o'clock in the morning, it's a little bit dicey. So if you could do it spring break maybe-ish, that'd be great.
Yeah. We'll try.
All right, next we have Water Secretary Jerry Austin.
Hello, Jerry.
Good evening, council.
Hello, Jimmy.
I will jump into our distribution. So as you all know, we're replacing our large diameter water meters. So our distribution team has really been helping out with that, trying to get that done before the, the weather breaks here. We do, as of now, we have five left to do in our system, so all but five. So we're, we're moving right along with that. I expect to see that done by the end of the year. We do have a couple of those that we're still waiting on order. They're the bigger six-inch meters, so they're kind of dragging us down a little bit on lead times. But I do look for those to be here by the end of the year. Luckily, those are in vaults. Most of them are down on the ground, so we can change them out in the wintertime, and the, the weather won't affect that as far as the freeze. Other than that, the infamous north entrance to the water treatment plant, we've been kind of bouncing back and forth with that concrete there that, that failed. We've finally got that done, seated, strolled. It's drivable. We get inside joke with that one. I think everybody in their brother in town's asked us if we knew a good concrete crew. Unfortunately, we have a second entrance, and we were working on that project as time allowed and didn't take precedence over a lot of other things. So from there, we did haul dry sludge from our drying beds this, this month. We haul that to a biohazard center in Dale. Biohazard center, sounds scary. What it is, is just our, some of the chemicals that we use have a residue to them that at potentially higher levels could be dangerous to fish and wildlife. It's the same thing that wastewater does with theirs. They field-applicate theirs. It's the same thing that wastewater does with theirs, they field applicate theirs. Um, with ours, ours don't have a lot of nutritional value, uh, being that it's not from human waste. So, um, as far as field applicating it, it's, there's not a whole lot of nutritional value there, so we haul ours to a, a specific center for that. Um, other than that, when we're done hauling that sludge, we do re-sand the drying beds, uh, the drying beds. From there, they'll set empty until, uh, we actually flush our sludge from our, uh, sludge basis to the drying beds. Um, we took a little bit of time with our, uh, permitting this year to do that, so they are actually full again. So, it is, they are actually setting full of sludge, drying out currently, so. We'll be doing that hopefully within the, uh, hopefully we can get a few dry weeks here, and it'll be dry, and we can get that hauled off, and they'll be cleaned out for roughly about a year. From there, uh, we did have a homeowner that called in that had a wet spot in their yard around their meter pit. We did find that we had a leaking meter shut-off valve, uh, they're on East Fourth Street. So we were able to go out there, um, unfortunately, when those shut-off valves are leaking. There's really no way to shut that water off without crimping the line itself. Uh, we try not to crimp the copper water lines, causes sharp edges, it causes weak points. So, um, we, uh, we enjoy these in the warmer months, because we do them live. Uh, the guys will go out there, they'll pull the, pull the valve off, water will spray, and they'll slam another one back on there. Uh, quite fun to watch sometimes. Uh, from there, we had one last sample station, I know we've kinda talked about those in the past, that was still the old, um. Epoxy coated iron, we did get that one replaced to a full stainless steel sample station. Uh, we, uh, kinda did a program with those, just to get those out of our system due to the epoxy coating coming off of them. Uh, so we had rust that was, um, building on those sample stations. As well as they wasn't as sealed up as these new ones, so that allowed for spiders and ants and things to get inside of those. And those sample stations are what we use monthly to take samples on to send to IDIM. And they are a picture of our distribution system, as far as our disinfectants. Um, any kind of E. coli, bacteria, anything that be, could be growing in our water system. So, um, we are held accountable for that, we do take those to an outside lab source, we don't do those samples ourself. Um, and, uh, that's how we are held accountable. So, keeping those in good condition for our samples really helps us give us the best picture that we can of our, our water system. Um, moving from there, we did, uh, the First Street Concrete Project has been finalized. But we did go up there and assist in that project quite a bit, uh, we had quite a few valve boxes up there. So, um, trying to get those valve boxes leveled up before they pour that concrete. Um, works out best for us, it doesn't create high valve boxes where snowplows can catch them and break them. Um, when that happens, we usually have to go back out and make a bigger hole to fix those. Uh, we don't want them, we don't want them setting low in the concrete, it creates tripping hazards. And then all the sand and rock from the roads tends to find their way in the valve boxes, and when we need to get on in an emergency, they're full of rock. And, uh, makes it more difficult for us, so we did, uh, we did spend quite a bit of time up there with them, keeping that together this past month. And then, um, we did, uh, on Tenth Street. Uh, I'm not sure what OFS plant that is, but one ten West Tenth Street, the building that the storm pulled the roof off of. They're kinda de-commissioning large section of that building, and turning it into, I believe it's an HR center. Um, so they kinda changed their, way their fire is, the way their pot of water comes in at, so we went out there and worked with them. We did, um, we had an auxiliary valve for their fire that, uh, we did replace, and then also, we did install a new service out there. Um, for that, uh, job being completed. And then, from there, we, uh, this past month, we did, uh, start and complete our fall flushing. Uh, we did do our ISO reads for our gallon per minute, static and residual. Uh, we have had our ISO audit, uh, this past month, myself, Donny Heim. Our DuBois County Dispatch Center and the auditor sat down, uh, we don't have any reports back yet. I assume you'll probably hear those at a Public Board of Works meeting with Donny Heim before I get those numbers. Um, but it seemed to go really well, uh, we had all the information he was asking for, and, and I, I feel very confident that we'll see a. A, uh, positive change in our numbers.
Are the ISO rating, it does impact insurance rates in the areas, so.
It does.
Very important one.
Yeah, not only, not only city insurance rates, but homeowners insurance rates.
It's big in the industry, it saves them a lot of money too.
It's, it's very, very large. And then, from there, uh, we had a four inch water main on County Road six sixty. Out towards the Ferdinand area, it's on our distribution main. Um, there was, uh, it's a plastic water main, there was no way to trace the water main. Um, so we did spend a, a few days out there, we had a home built out there that requested water service. Um, so, we, uh, had a, a general idea of where that water line set. That we did spend a few days out there in locating that water main, and marking that water main for future reference. Um, and then other than that, I had two distribution employees, um, that are fairly new to the water department, Owen Hunefeld and Josh Rogie. Uh, they both completed their CDL training and passed their exams. Um, we owe a lot of thanks to John's Department, Rich Treader, uh, takes care of that for us now, so we don't have to. Set through the, the class over at, uh, Forge Fairgrounds. Um, Rich puts a lot of work into it with the guys, and, uh, it, it shows the work that he does put in.
It saves us thousands of dollars a year.
Yes, first five thousand dollars.
Currently versus sending it out.
Five thousand dollars of employee turns into about a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, by doing it in-house with Rich being a instructor, so.
Very good.
Um, other than that, the filter plant, it's, um, operating as it should be. Um, and then our metering system there, I kinda touched on that before, we, uh, have five, five, uh, meters to put in. To, uh, complete our census system, and we are still notifying our customers daily of our, um. Leaks and continuous flow and things like that on their alarm systems.
Couldn't quite hit two million gallons, huh?
Nope, couldn't quite hit it. We might see that, we did, we did finish up our flushing there, uh, this past month, and we had about a week and a half, we wasn't able to run our filtration plant. Due to the lake, um, anytime it rains hard, it gets cold, it gets super hot. Um, our solubles, that kinda mixes up the dirt and stuff in the lake. Uh, we're held to a little higher standards with the water we can send to town with treating water for Farbest. It, uh, it has to be very clean, it doesn't work well with their chillers like other communities get away with. So, uh, on those days, we are very thankful that we have our redundancy with Potoka Water. Um, we don't, uh, that did kinda hold up our flushing a little bit. Whenever we aren't able to produce water, we try not to use any more water necessary, we don't flush hydrants. Uh, we always notify the fire department to make sure that they're not doing any extra training. Um, that pertains to water usage and things like that, so. Uh, other than that, we're plenty capable of, with our tanks full and Potoka running, we're able to sustain the city. With everything in normal operations. Other than that, that's all I have, you have any questions?
Thank you Jerry.
Thank you.
Uh, Phil Snyder, Attorney.
Have nothing.
Go to Tom Dipple, uh, consider adoption of the twenty twenty-six budget ordinance.
Yeah, we, uh, introduced it last, at the last meeting. There's been no changes, there's been no, uh, no one to come forward in ten days. Or with any comments, so, uh, it just needs to be. Only adopted then.
Need a motion to do so?
So it's just, you have already introduced it, so it just requires adoption by motion and, and roll call vote?
Make motion to adopt twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call, Kissling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Bolti.
Aye.
Where? Four eyes, one absence.
Now do we need to open the public hearing for the? I'm sorry, go ahead. Apologize. Jumped ahead.
This is one that goes on gateway. Just, uh, check your vote and sign. Right.
What do you think, you got a bugger thing?
No, I just. A pen in general.
Hi Captain. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now there's a signature, okay.
Normal process. Thank you. And then, and then now we would do a, uh, a public hearing for the additional appropriation. For the opioid restricted fund to purchase the Lucas devices.
So we'll, uh, open up that public hearing for any comments, uh, from the public or from the council. Uh, this is regarding the, uh, what was the ordinance number on that?
That would be, that was twenty-eight, uh, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, it's in order of approving the additional appropriations, uh, for the Lucas devices, that's forty-five thousand. Coming out of the restricted opioid, uh, we've had the conversation that there's very few things that qualify. Uh, these Lucas devices, uh, come in, uh, are very appropriate to have the both of those. Uh, for anybody that there's an overdose or other opioid related, uh, illnesses with people. Uh, they save lives basically, so those two, uh, devices, uh, were approved. Uh, by the Board of Public Works also, but had to come here for the, for you to discuss utilizing the opioid fence for those. Any public comments? Any council comments? We have a motion then to close, uh, the session?
Make a motion, close the open meeting.
I'll second it.
Hey, we had a first and second to close the hearing, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll need, uh, adoption, uh, consideration of adoption.
She was introduced at the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Got a first and a second on adoption, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kissling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Bolti.
Aye.
Where? Four eyes, one absence.
Okay. Thank you. Any, uh, other council items today?
Send a comment, I don't know if the city mowed the ditch out, south of town, or if the state did.
State, state did.
They obviously don't have a moat reaches across the ditch.
Yeah.
So.
We don't either, so.
Well, I saw one mowing out south of town last night that could've probably done it, but I don't know why he didn't do it, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's.
Should've brought him a bottle of water and a cookie, said, hey buddy.
I wanna put a sign up, says this is not my property.
How often do they mow it, once a year?
Never, that's the first time.
You and I will not be happy till they fill that ditch in with a big pot.
I agree. Should've been done to start with.
And, and you know, that's one thing I, we will address, because right now, when those grass gets that high and they spray it. We have dry grass there, luckily it's rained, cause a lot of times that can be a fire hazard, somebody throws out a cigarette or something like that. So, uh, luckily, we've had wet weather, where that's not gonna be the case here, but, uh. I agree. Uh, you know, one thing, I, I think before I ask for citizens' items, to just bring it through, we have had. Some tragedies, some death within our, uh, uh, within our. City employees over the last three weeks, and, uh, I'll just ask continued prayer for those families and. Uh, wanna say thank you to the, uh, the agencies, uh, City of Jasper, the county, the state that have. That have come out to show their, uh, condolences and in support of, of our police force, of our, uh, we have another. Uh, funeral tomorrow for, uh, an employee, uh, that, you know, that will be attending, but. Uh, it's not been a real good month for, for us, but, uh, we. Uh, understand, uh, that these things happen, and we're just glad that we have communities that have been very supportive. With their prayers and positive comments, so I wanted to put that out there. Okay, we have any citizens' items tonight, are you here for?
I am.
Okay, if you wanna come to the podium and, and speak here, just introduce yourself and. This is being recorded, so we wanna make sure they hear you on, on live, so.
Hi, my name is Katrina Cox. So I just, um. I'm here because I have an issue and a concern, and this seems to be the only way that I, in the past, have been able to. Resolve issues is by coming here, sadly. I am trying to understand and get help with the dog ordinance in the city. We have an ongoing issue with some dogs in our neighborhood. That we continue to call the police department, cause that's what we have been told to do. And I feel very, like a nuisance doing that, but. By majority of the policemen, that's what we're told to do, is every time these dogs are not on their leash, to call. So that's what we do, there are a few policemen that are telling us not to do that. This has been ongoing for like four years, we have a fenced property. That goes not to our fence line. And these, we've replaced about twelve fence panels, because they are bust, we have vinyl fence, they're busting out the fence panels. We have talked to this neighbor over and over and over. And he's just not a civil person to talk to unfortunately, cause he's typically not a sober person to talk to. I, we don't know what else to do.
What area of town do you live in?
We live in Hunter's Crossing, I'm sure everybody knows who the person is. The police have been out there over and over and over. And every answer that we get is just, yeah, they're supposed to be on a leash, but. We can't really do anything, we can just keep warning him, I mean, like at this point, we've put up a trail cam, we have like videos and pictures of. The dogs aren't nice, like they've come after my kids. We're, we have done due diligence to be good pet owners, and we have our dogs fenced in our yard, but our dogs get out. Because the fence panels get busted out. And it's very frustrating, and we don't know what else to do. We, I mean, we have pictures, we have pictures of him trying to put the fence panels back in, cause they keep getting broke out. Like we're frustrated, our fence is expensive, and we're continuing to replace panels that is. Full of holes, and we keep unscrewing and putting them back, but we're having to replace them, because you can't just keep screwing them back in. And then our dogs are getting out, and then of course, we're gonna be liable if our dogs are out. And you can't, you can't talk to the person, cause he just says, okay, okay, or he's very belligerent, and. I just, I don't, the dog ordinance that we're, that we keep getting told is that, yeah, they have to be on a leash, and then we'll find them after so many times. I just, and there's been multiple other neighbors calling, everybody has just kinda given up, cause the dogs just run loose.
Has code enforcement been involved?
I believe it's, uh, city police generally.
City police is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but we haven't, um, well, they have, they enforce, um. Fines on animals that are not supposed to be in the city, I mean, if you got.
They can, they can, generally, speaking of the practice has been that the police enforce it, because they're readily available.
Yeah, they're, they're active and on patrol.
So I guess the question is, is that what we've asked the police department is, cause they tell us, just call us every time. And we've asked them, well, so at what point, like what do you do at what point, so you guys have been out there how many times, five hundred times? So what, you just keep going out there, and you just keep slapping his hand and telling him to keep his dogs in? See, I mean, literally, he busted out our fence last weekend, and then we won't see his dogs out for like a week. He'll contain them in his house and whatnot, and then all of a sudden, they're back out again. And then as soon as they bust out another panel, he'll have them contained for like a week or so, and then they're back out again, I mean, I can't even leave my dogs in my yard. My fenced yard when I leave my house.
What ordinances were pertaining to this, Phil?
Well, we do have a, we have an animal ordinance that prohibits, uh, uh. Well, we do have a, we have an animal ordinance that prohibits dogs running at large, animals running at large. And there's a twenty-five, it's either twenty-five or fifty dollar fine for the first offense. It doubles the second offense and then it goes up to a hundred dollars for multiple offenses in a, in a calendar year. And if that's not being enforced by our police department or code enforcement, it should be.
So I'm wondering, it should be some kind of a fine, civil suit?
From a civil standpoint, owners of animals are liable for the damages they do to other people's property. And sometimes a small claims suit will get dog owners' attention. I mean, nobody likes to sue their neighbor and I'm not suggesting you should or have to, but that is an option, but it's not something the city would do obviously.
Right.
Do they, so he has them just loose in his backyard, but he, he doesn't have a fence?
He doesn't have a fence or, yeah, he doesn't have a fence, he's not an underground fence. They're just running kind of loose in the neighborhood. Like they're always on my property like, because my fence doesn't go to my property line. They run loose everywhere.
How many animals are there?
Three.
All in one household?
Yes.
How, how are they actually breaking out the fence panels? Are they lunging at your pets? Are they trying to, you know, fence fighting with your dogs on the inside?
Yeah, they, they, yeah, because like, so the only part of my fence that they gets broke out is that one, the section where they're at. Like they don't bother any other part. I mean, you've been to our house, you know where the fence line is. Doesn't bother any part of the fence. It's just that one small section where our yards meet. One is, he's not even on our pro, like his dogs are on our property when they're breaking out the fence.
Because you're not, you're not, your fence is not at the property line.
It's not, no.
You have setback for your fence.
Right.
How far off the property is it?
The backside that, that they're coming on is six feet off. And then the other side is on the property line, but it's on our ne, our other neighbor's property line and ours. So his dogs are on my property line and my neighbor's property line. So on both sides, they're not even on his property line.
So you maintain the yard on the backside of the fence?
Right. I just don't know, I mean, what point, like I understand the civil suit part of it, but like at what point do you, you keep going out there over and over? So what, you just keep telling them, keep your dogs in? Like, so what is, I guess was the point of the ordinance if, because he knows, he'll say, well, go call the police again. They're just going to come out and warn me again.
If you can leave your contact information here with me, I will, I will meet with you onsite with the chief. And we'll rectify this because obviously, I mean, if we have a fine, we should be administering the fine. And it sounds like they've already qualified for a hundred dollar fine based upon what you told us. But we have, I want to see what documentation. We can pull those calls. We can see what we have to do. But obviously, we have to start with the twenty-five because if we not find up till now and go from there and the calendar year is almost over. But I, I think that we need to meet with that person to let them know what the consequences are going forward, obviously.
And I said, we've tried to talk to them a lot because they're, we're neighbors, so we don't want to have any issues. And it's just, it's gone nowhere and it's the point where it's frustrating. Like I said, they've come after my kids. I mean, some of the, the pictures that we have are, I mean, I have big dogs. These are big dogs. I have big dogs too and they're scary. They're not, they're scary pictures.
Because it's a public media, I'm going to ask, not going to ask for you to give us out your phone number, but if you could write that down for me. I mean, I have, and I could get that and I'll arrange with chief, with the chief Kramer and myself to get together with you. We'll arrange a visit with the neighbor, whatever we need to do.
I appreciate that.
This is, this is frustrating. I mean, yeah, this is really very frustrating, especially, I mean, not probably lived there very long and have put up with this out there, so.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, we've lived there four and a half years. It's been going on the whole time and all my neighbors have said the same thing and they're like, I don't, they're like, we've given up. We don't know what else to do.
Said, I know who it is, but I don't.
Let me not, there's a few that probably, I mean, every time we call, we've called the police, they're like, we already know who you're calling for. I'm like, I'm sorry, it's what you're telling me to do, so I'm just following your process of what you said to do.
We'll get, we'll get to the bottom of it. I promise you, we'll get something, this will get, daytime, nighttime, what's your best time to, to contact, to meet with you?
Probably in the morning would be the best time. Thank you. I appreciate that.
There's no account, there's no system of accountability that we're using.
My most frustration is I feel like that there isn't.
Frustrating that we should have ordinances in place and, and, and things like that, then there should be. Now, if it's, you know, you know, it's a, a once, you know, a, a, a non-repeating event is, you know, somebody's animal gets out, you know, once and there's, there's an issue and it gets resolved, that's something, but this.
Right.
You're telling me, everybody knows, everybody knows your number when you call and they know why they're, you're calling and, and where, where they're going and everything, that's.
Because they're like, oh, we know who that is. Oh, yeah, we've been out there a lot of times. And that's my frustration is that I'm like, okay, so you're telling me that you have an ordinance. And if you tell me this is what it is, then why? Either it's just a gray, there's, it's no black and white or they'll be following it.
There should be some form of escalation.
Have a fenced-in yard. It would be different. I mean, they don't expect dogs in a fenced-in yard to be on a leash, but if.
Right. And dogs get out. Like I understand that. My dogs have gotten out before. Like it happens. I understand that, but.
I, I can't say that there haven't been any dogs running at large citations issued recently and, and I believe there have been and they've run across my desk. And it could be the individual whom you're speaking about. I don't know who that is. But generally, what happens is after those, those tickets are issued, those citations are issued, they're allowed fifteen days. And then it comes to, if they haven't been paid within fifteen days, it comes to me and then I write them a letter. And if they don't respond within a certain number of days, then I file suit. Now, we're not at that point on any of those dogs running at large that I've had to file suit yet. There may have been some citations issued. They just haven't gotten that far yet. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know the individual you're talking about. And I can't recall off head, off the top of my head, who, who these tickets were issued to.
Can the police department issue a fine or do they?
They do issue, the police department will issue a citation for violating the animal ordinance, the dogs running at large ordinance. And it, it, there is a fine associated with it and they issued this, the ticket and they have fifteen days to come before the ordinance violation bureau will pay their fine. If they don't, then it comes to me, I file suit to collect the fine and court costs. Court cost is about a hundred and eighty-three dollars now, I think. So the, the fine's only maybe twenty-five or fifty dollars, so sometimes it gets their attention.
Yeah, the court costs is what adds up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I know it's intimidating coming up here sometimes. I appreciate you being.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other items? I don't entertain a motion to adjourn if you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks. I'll second that.
Second on adjournment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?